Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's planning board meeting. It's Tuesday, January 10th, and the meeting is beginning at 7:00 PM. We are in Cahill Auditorium this evening. We have a full board present this evening, so if the minutes could show that. And we do not have an advertised time on our new public hearing. Does that mean that we can take that up at any point? Or should we go with 7:15 on that?
No, that means I made a mistake on the agenda. But let me just check the notice, because I'm guessing... The notice says 7:15.
Okay, great.
Apologies, Madam Chair.
That's all right. So we will move down to the old-new business section of our agenda, and the public hearing will begin at 7:15. And we'll take up some stuff before then. So the first item on old-new business that I would like to take up is the approval of meeting minutes from our November 9th meeting. Hopefully, members have had a chance to review those minutes. And any comments, or questions, or revisions on the minutes would be appropriate to note now. If there are none, we just need a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Member Crowe to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member McCamey. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right, great. So, and I would like to make a note, it's not on our agenda this evening, but in the November meeting minutes, towards the end of the meeting, it was noted in our minutes, and also at that meeting, that we were going to be adding a term limit discussion to our agenda in December. I understand that the town, I think we have, we have, the town is working on a write-up for us, and we will get it. Can we have that, if we can put that on the February agenda? Would that be appropriate timing?
Yes, Madam Chair, as long as, I don't, I didn't want to put it on if we didn't have the letter. We're just, Crystal Huff is putting something together for the board, and hopefully, we should have that by February.
Okay, great. So if we could just make note to keep that as just a tracking business item on next month's agenda, that would be great. Make sure that doesn't fall off of our radar. The next item, we could do request for as-built approval and release of surety. 140 and 150 Wood Road?
Yes, if I may, Madam Chair, I can refresh the board's memory. This application was for two permanent tattoo, excuse me, permanent makeup artists that were looking to occupy suites at that building, and they needed a special permit. At the time of application and review of the site, we determined that there were a few components of the site that were not in compliance with the previous approved record plans. So I've been working very closely with the O'Connor Company and their representatives on bringing the site into compliance, which included removing a lot of excess pavement, adding landscaping, getting their dumpsters in approved locations, enclosing those, cleaning out the drainage system, and bringing some lights that were not functioning back to life, given that there are some tenants that spill over into the evening on that site. So I do want to commend the property owner for working very closely with us, and really, a pleasure to work with them. This relationship started out with somebody hanging up on somebody else, and now, I actually reached out to them today and thanked them for improving their site and following the conditions. We have an as-built plan that reflects those minor modifications on the site. There was one item that was outstanding in the conditions of approval, and that was the ongoing stormwater operations and maintenance plan, and they have provided me with something today. So everything has been completed in accordance with the conditions. At this point, the planning staff is recommending that we return the $2,000 as-built surety and grant as-built approval with conditions 1, 2, 13, 15, 21, 22, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, and 37 as surviving. Thank you.
All right. I'll just take comments from the board now. If there's any questions on this application, the request for as-built approval and release of surety. Member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Member McCamey, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions.
Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions? Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Member Connolly, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Great. I do not have any further comments or questions either. So with that, Chair, we'll entertain a motion to grant as-built approval and release of surety with the remaining conditions noted by staff.
Second.
So moved? You make the motion?
Yes.
All right. So we need a second.
Second.
Second by Member McCamey. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is approval-not-required subdivision plan for 351 Lyle Street. If, I don't know if there's anyone here on behalf of that, but if staff wants to give an overview, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
The applicant went before the zoning board of appeals for a variance from 135-701, notes 2, for a required lot width. That variance is reflected on the A&amp;R plan, as denoted. The applicant is seeking to combine the three parcels of land and then turn them into two parcels. One will maintain the existing dwelling at 351 Lyle Street, and the other parcel will be build-up a lot towards the rear.
Does anybody on the board have any comments or questions with regards to this? I'll start with Member Crowe.
No questions.
Member McCamey?
No questions, thank you.
Member Kent?
No questions.
Member Grove?
No questions.
Member Connolly?
No, thank you.
I just had one question, and I did reach out to staff on this earlier, just with regards to monumentation on this plan in particular. With the creation of the new lot, I think it might be beneficial, and I don't know if the applicant intends to do this. I didn't see it noted on the A&amp;R plan, but to provide monumentation on the new lot, especially at the road right-of-way. So I wasn't sure how to best, I guess, talk about that piece.
Certainly. We did reach out to the applicant and their surveyor. I believe they can speak to that tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening. Timothy Bennett with Grady Consulting. I'm the lance of air with my stamp on the plan. We did not intend to set any additional monuments. I would like to call your attention to three existing monuments on the property. The front-left corner, pardon my paper rustling. There's an iron pipe. Very reticent to set an additional monument where there exists one already. Also, the left-rear corner of the front lot is an old fence post. So we'd have to remove that to set a monument there. And then, the angle point in the new lot, 139 feet back, has an iron pipe near that corner. The mathematics are provided of 1.55 feet along the line and 0.66 feet off the line. Given there are three monuments on the, excuse me, on the locus, as well as three stone bounds shown on the other side of Union Street, which any competent surveyor could calculate the location of, we didn't feel it was necessary to add more monuments.
So that wouldn't be your standard of practice, to provide that monumentation as part of this?
At the point where a building permit is applied for, for the rear lot, I would expect that the owner of that property might want to have it monumented, but that's certainly up to their choice.
If I could ask staff if they know, is there any sort of requirement through the building process that would, I guess, trigger someone to provide that monumentation, or that they would require that monumentation? Or is that, or are you suggesting that would be the applicant, the owner's interest?
I believe Mr. Bennett alluded that it would be the owner's interest in having that monumentation in.
If I may, Madam Chair, that's a typical request from the contractor if they build a house or something like that, to have the lot corners staked or monumented.
Okay. Go ahead, Director.
If I may, Madam Chair. So the stakes are one thing. I think the monumentation is something that's a little bit more, more permanent. My only comment would be that if the planning board is looking for additional monumentation, that is within your purview as part of this. The planning board is the one that is creating this lot through endorsement of this plan. And typically, through the building permit process, sometimes they have them stake them, but I don't think that that's a hard-and-fast requirement. I know Connor and I, if somebody's going to be working in close proximity to a property line, and there's, the abutters are concerned, we have that staked prior to its starting, so everybody kind of knows, you know, who owns what and what is where. But my recommendation would be if the board is interested in additional monumentation, that we do it now, and that it's added to the plan, so that when the plan is recorded, because there's no recording of building permits or anything like that.
Then I did note the monumentation found at the corner of Union Street and Middle Street, but I didn't see any record math that would take you back to finding those if the surveyor was to go back and recreate your work and recreate your survey in the field, which is why I was just thinking that it may be in the town's interest if an opportunity is here with this application, seeking this lot, to at least place markers on the frontage of Lyle Street.
Yeah, I would, whatever, I think, anything that the board is looking for for monumentation, I think is well within their purview. I can tell you that when we do definitive subdivisions, we typically mark all the changes in curvature along the road where the property line and, excuse me, the layout meet. So we've had different requests over time on approval-not-required plans. Our former town engineer was big on monumentation. So I think it might just be a preference and thinking forward on what's going to be available in the future.
Yeah, that's kind of what, thinking in lines of what we would do for a typical subdivision, and that same line of thought. So would, so it would be possible for the board to include that we would like to see if we are so moved to show monumentation on Lyle Street for the two lots? So that would be showing, it looks like there's one marker. There's one marker on Lyle Street at the southwest corner. Then we would be looking to have the two other points that designate the other corner of Lot C and the corner of Lot D.
So the two, the two points along Lyle where the sidelines meet Lyle Street?
I think that would be reasonable. I don't know if the, if the, if the surveyor has any thoughts on what would be reasonable.
That certainly would be reasonable. In reading your regulations, there was no requirement for us to include additional monuments. You know, it, we would be happy to install iron rods at the front corners if that would suffice. If we could get the plan signed tonight, they have an agreement in place to sell both properties to the same owner.
Yep.
So time is of the essence. So whether, how we could verify that, I could provide, Connor, unless I, photographs or sign statements or something like that, that we set the corners.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think just noting that we would be endorsing it with the expectation that monuments would be set, some sort of monument, iron, iron pipe or whatever he had suggested that would be.
Yeah, I would, I would think that they would be added to the Mylar.
Yeah, they can show them, yeah.
And then we can get that signed within the next couple of days.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Thank you very much.
And I, and to your second point regarding the monumentation across Union Street, part of the reason I did not show the mathematics, the record math, it didn't, I don't want to certify the boundary lines of property that I didn't certify, survey. So I didn't survey parcels in between our lot and that, and those monuments. Therefore, I didn't want to show bearings and distances on those lots. It's just the rationale, I know, and it looks a little odd having those monuments floating out there in space with no math to them.
Yeah, it, I mean, it looks like you most likely surveyed the street line or the public way to get to them, but I...
We surveyed a lot of street line.
Yeah, I know, I know. And I think, I think that is just, we see a lot of this in Braintree, just an overall lack of monumentation, or just like not awareness for the importance of that. And I think moving forward to protect the residents and, you know, everyone's best interest to have that monumentation be important to the town and available to other people doing work in the community, I think is important. So, so yeah, that's just kind of the thought process. So I appreciate that. All right, so that was my only comment. I think aside, everything else seems straightforward. So we would just need a motion to accept the A&amp;R and just endorse the A&amp;R and have those two monuments shown on the plan that will be ultimately signed. So if someone wants to make a motion to do that. Member Kent, do we have a second?
Certainly.
Second, Member Grove, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right.
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, it's a little, oh, Member Grove, did you have a comment?
A question, whether we had any response from the town council yet?
Oh. On the, I had meant, as I mentioned at the beginning, but the town, they're working on a memo, I understand, and we're going to have that most likely available at the February meeting, but regardless, it will be an item on the February meeting agenda?
I think somebody's losing a little perspective here, because if it turns out that we are not legally constituted as a board, I would suspect, and you could tell me different if so, that a lot of our votes are useless.
And I think we, I mean, I, I do understand the point. I am not a legal expert on that, and I don't, so I, I think we are, we are waiting on the town's expertise on providing that to us, and I don't have control over that aspect of it, other than to ask about it being on.
No, I don't know if Member Crowe had any input.
I don't know offhand, yeah. I don't, I wouldn't want to say anything one way or another.
So we will, regardless of, we'll have it on the February agenda, and hopefully, at that time, we will have the feedback from the town solicitor.
Correct. And we have not been advised to not hold meetings, so I'm not concerned with it, us moving forward.
Meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. It is 7:20, so we will move up to our public hearing. We have one public hearing this evening for Town Council Order 22-073, which is a zoning ordinance, text amendments for the floodplain. It's updates to Section 135-301 and 135-608. And the planning board is the applicant. So with that, we do need to read into the record, the public notice, so...
Notice is given by the planning board under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 5 and 11, and the Braintree Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 135, Articles 3, 6, and 15, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, at 7:15 PM in the Braintree Town Hall. The planning board will provide a recommendation to the town council on Order 22-073 sponsored by the planning board. Said order includes zoning ordinance text amendments to bring Section 135-301 Establishment of Districts and Section 135-608 Wetlands and Floodplain Protection District into compliance with the current FEMA requirements.
Thank you. Before opening it up to members of the board and/or members of the public, if staff would like to just give an overview of the amendment and kind of what facilitated it and where we are, and then I can take questions from, from the board or the public, although it does not appear anyone is here for that, so...
I'd love to, Madam Chair. So not that this isn't anything fancy and extravagant, but it really isn't. So the town, about a year ago, was subject to a community assistance visit, which I've included in my cover letter here to the council. And during that process, they do kind of an audit of what are you doing with your floodplain, and they look through floodplain application files, and they look at building permits for things in the floodplain. And we went through that process, and there were, there were two other components of that process. One was going to be that the Charles River Watershed was looking at the floodplain maps, and they actually issued some draft, draft maps. We worked with the engineering department to get notices out to people where things were changing, and then that came to sort of a screeching halt, and they were doing more work and have not issued anything on those maps to date. They will be, hopefully, I'd say, in about a year from now. The second component was FEMA. The Federal Emergency Management Association has a quote "model bylaw", and these people are tasked with getting all of these communities in compliance with what FEMA would like to see in your local ordinance. So what we did, actually Connor, we took the old ordinance and the new one and kind of said, what's in there, what's not, and combined them together, shared that with our contact at DCR. There was a little bit of back and forth on a few things. And then what we have this evening is the version, which they are happy to say is in compliance with FEMA requirements, and sort of checks another box on our community assistance visit. And then the last component will be changing the map reference in the actual text when those maps are issued. We asked if we could just say, as most recently amended, so we wouldn't have to amend it again, but the answer was no. They actually want the panels and references denoted in the actual ordinance itself. So really, not much discretion here. You know, frankly, for the planning board, we do want to stay in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, which provides insurance to residents in the community that are located in floodplain areas. And we also, in addition, and above and beyond that, we maintain the community rating system, which gives Braintree homeowners a 15% discount on their flood insurance. So basically, this is the, the new, the new face of floodplain, and we're just trying to stay compliant so that we are in good eyes with, with FEMA and also for protection for our residents here in the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, not overly, not too much exciting here, but that's, it is, it is what it is. And I don't know if Connor wanted to add anything.
All right, I'll open it up to the board for comments or questions, if anybody has any. Member Crowe, do you have any comments or questions?
Can you give just a short, a couple of the bullet points of what's different with this and the old one?
Um, not that much. Yeah.
If anything, if I may, Madam Chair, if anything, we added some more definitions. We removed some. The main difference, I would say, is we took wetlands out of its title and really throughout, it's not really mentioned within the existing bylaw. In addition to that, we defined each floodplain zone as required within the audit. In addition to that, there were some things that were changed and some things that were taken out that were not in compliance. Those are fairly minor. And then we added some additional sections, such as the disclaimer, the severability. In addition to that, we added, for example, recreational vehicles, things of that nature, which needed to be added.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Member, oh, is that it?
Yeah, that was it.
Member McCamey, do you have any comments or questions?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. Would these changes have impacted any recent projects? Or are they going to impact future projects in any way?
Um, I would say, well, one of the things that's changing, as Connor pointed out, a lot of this was defining things in the, you know, terms can have different meanings in different contexts, especially in an ordinance. So these definitions in this section are applicable to, to the floodplain. One of the major takeaways, at least in my opinion, was the elevation above the floodplain elevation. So now it's, it's one foot. And in the building code, which we just referenced, the most recent version of the building code, again, because this is, could be subject to continual change, is in the AE, you'll need to be two feet above, and in the velocity zone, you'll need to be three feet above. So the velocity zone doesn't impact us as much, but people elevating things. And then there's a lot of different things in here about like, if you're in the floodplain and you have an RV and your driveway needs to be anchored, like all these things that, you know, I mean, who would have thought, but it does happen that there would be an RV floating down a street. These aren't even, you know, these aren't things, but they happen, you know? So as we, as we face climate change and, and different things like that, I think they're really trying to get ahead of those, and, and as they see things happen, they're, they're trying to get a little, a little more stringent in, within their jurisdiction.
Okay. I was thinking specifically about the pool hockey rink, you know, would that have impacted?
That is not, I don't believe that in the floodplain.
Okay, okay.
There are wetlands near that area, but this is for, this is for regulatory floodplain.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Kent, do you have any comments or questions?
Just, just one question, just give me an estimate roughly of how many buildings, homes, or acreage would be affected by this in the town?
I don't have that figure, Mr. Kent, I'm sorry, I don't...
A couple of thousand or a couple of hundred, or?
Well, what affects, I think what affects them more would be the elevations changing in a particular district. So the floodplain elevations vary throughout the community. Believe it or not, we have floodplain as high as 105 feet above, you know, above sea level, based on some rivers and things like that. I don't know how many properties in Braintree are in the floodplain, but I can send you a map tomorrow that shows those.
Yeah, just...
Yeah, I wouldn't, I'd actually need to have our GIS person, like, run that layer and see how many pieces it actually touches.
Yep, not a, not a big issue, just a sort of a curiosity.
There's a fair amount.
Yeah.
There's a fair amount. I think the, the drawing, I can send you, we have an overlay in our GIS that shows that, and then you, you know, with the color, you can get an idea of, of, you know, it's a decent amount of area, but some of it's like all-around massive conservation areas and things like that, that wouldn't necessarily, there wouldn't necessarily be development there anyways. But there's, there's a fair amount.
Okay.
A fair.
That's all.
Member Grove, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Was, I'm assuming that this is the total removal of any wetlands references. Have we lost any regulatory oversight because it got deleted to comply with floodplain? Do we, do we need an additional?
I, I don't know why it said wetlands and floodplain, because wetlands are not mapped and regulated in that manner. Wetlands are changed constantly. The floodplain is an established boundary that is established by, by FEMA, and we are bound by those maps. Wetlands and floodplain was in the title, to Connor's point, and then it never appeared anywhere in the section. So I think removing it has no impact on anything. And we, the planning board never has jurisdiction over wetlands anyways. So frankly, we were trying to figure out why it was in there, and we couldn't. So we got rid of it.
I, before I take comment from you, Member Connolly, I just had a follow-up question along the same lines of what Member Grove had said. So just, I had noted, I was wondering that same thing, that changing of the title and removing the wetlands, if we were losing any sort of potential protection that we had before. And I did note in both versions, the old version and the new version, there is a comment that says in the absence of there being a FEMA-designated flood zone, the special, that if the Special Permit Granting Authority determines that flooding exists, the Floodplain Protection District boundaries shall be 50 feet from any wetlands as defined by MGL, Chapter 131. So that's kind of like an odd metric, I think, to have in there, because would we, the planning board would be the Special Permit Granting Authority? board would be the special permit granting authority? And I don't know to what extent we would. It's just kind of an odd metric. It's, that's still in the bylaw.
In the model, yeah. Um, I, and again, this is a federal, you know, so there might be, there might be some places where, I mean, I can't see, you know, if there was a flooding situation, we would, we would call that out and we would have that studied. But if, if we felt strongly enough about that, we would look to get a map amendment to include that because otherwise it's just subjective.
Yeah.
And it would be based on substantial study. I don't honestly, uh, I, I'm not disputing FEMA and, and, but I, I, I don't ever see that happening. I, I really don't.
Was the entire bylaw, that was taken from a FEMA model? Was that, or was that, it's just the, the wording is, looks like it wasn't our old, our old bylaw and is in our new bylaw as well, but it doesn't?
Well, all, just so that we know, every time we update this, it's based on what FEMA tells us to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, it, it is. Um, again, I don't, I don't, there, there could be a circumstance where that is something that happens. It's, it's never happened here. Um, we follow the federal requirements and we use the FEMA maps and those boundaries. Every day we're checking that stuff when we're looking at different properties. Um, and I, you know, that's part of what the watershed study is now through, um, the Charles River Watershed in conjunction with this people at the state and people at DCR. That's essentially what they're doing. They do modeling, they look at flood data, they look at areas of, that of concern that aren't mapped and they study them and they figure out and that's like, it's a very high level. Uh, respectfully, I'm not qualified to start laying out floodplain areas and I don't know if I'd be recommending that the planning board did either. If we were faced with an area that was not mapped and we knew of, of some significant ongoing flooding there, um, that would be something that we would take to, to a higher level to have it vetted properly.
Okay.
And actually, believe it or not, some of the, what's happening is there's some areas that are going from 100 to 500 and vice versa. So there are some areas that maybe have been historically mapped as floodplain that right now they're not, they're take, they're, they're downgrading them to 500. And I'm, I'm sure that's based on some sort of, you know, hydrology and water and what's flowing and this dam came down, this went up, this, you know, there's, there's so many things that can, that can impact those areas even if they're not that close to us.
Okay. I guess as a, just one more comment, follow-up along that same line is, you know, just to kind of make sure we don't, um, not that, not that I think this would happen, but lose sight of wetland regulations. It does say compliance with other regulations in the bylaw and it notes the other regulations you should comply with and some of those are the DEP wetland restrictions. But I was wondering if we should add any of our applicable local bylaws to that section? Possibly just our wetlands bylaw or, um, I guess just as a way to ensure that the wetlands is, protection is still tied to this even though it's no longer called wetlands and floodplain? It's section L?
Yeah, I'm looking at L here. So these are, um, so we have the building code, obviously, that's where a lot of these elevation requirements and so forth and, uh, and then 310, that's the, the, the wetland sections. So are you looking to add like our local ordinance? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a reference to our local wetlands ordinance. Member Connolly, did you have comments or questions?
My questions have been answered, thank you.
Oh, great. Yeah, Member Crowhaugh, go ahead.
Um, sections O talks about variances.
Oh, yeah.
And it's very confusing. The first one says that no variances shall be granted related to community compliance. Is that something different than a property owner requesting a variance? And also that the reference is, should be 406 instead of 407. But it looks like it's giving criteria for, for a property owner to request a variance, but...
So there's, and we had lengthy discussion with the state about this, um, because, uh, both Connor and I and the building inspector, we didn't even know you could get variances from the floodplain and that is something that we're not interested in granting. Um, my understanding is you can go to the state and get those types of variances similar to like the state building code. Um, so 407 is actually the correct reference. I think you're looking at the E code, which is incorrect. But 407 is the variances. So no variances outlined. So that's the section of our ordinance that explains deviating and we're basically saying in here, like you're not going to get one here. So if you're going to try to do something like that, and again, I, that is not a practice. Uh, I just, I don't even understand how that works, to be honest. I really don't. Um, that's not anything we support, it's not anything we promote, frankly, we didn't even know you could do it. Um, and now they're kind of advertising it. Um, so we had some lengthy discussion and, and even with the building inspector and he's like, I'm not, I'm not getting into that. It's too much, too much liability with, with that and with water and flooding and things like that. So we essentially want to make it clear that, you know, we're not, our zoning board of appeals is not going to be granting variances, um, from any floodplain requirements in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just had one follow-up question, point of curiosity. Who is the town of Braintree's floodplain administrator? Is that you?
Or my designee.
Okay. Um, I think that's it. It does not appear that anybody from the public is here right now, so I'm going to take that as no comments from the public, um, for this public hearing. So with that, um, can close the public hearing. So we need a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion by Member Grove, a second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, we need to enter into the record correspondence and that would be through the most recent date, is that?
We don't have any correspondence.
We don't have any correspondence.
No, it's just the application and the legal notice.
All right, so we don't have to do that. Um, all right, uh, Chair will entertain a motion on, um, a recommendation, it's a recommendation, correct, to Town Council?
Yep.
Um, a recommendation to Town Council for this zoning ordinance? Do we have a recommendation? For a favorable recommendation? Yes? All right, uh, Member Kent, favorable recommendation to the Town Council. Do we have a second? A second by Member Grove? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, we have one item left on our agenda, which is a staff update to MBTA communities work. Um, so, uh, Director Santucci-Razi, are you giving the update on that?
Yes, I'd love to. Um, very quickly, and I'm not sure who got a chance to catch us at the Town Council Subcommittee Meeting on Community Planning. Uh, we were there just before the holidays, um, and that was recorded and available, um, on the Zoom if folks are interested. I'm going to do the Reader's Digest version, um, this evening. I know there might be some questions in the community, questions from planning board members, uh, as we move forward through this process, um, the planning board will be tasked with making recommendations and weighing in on any zoning changes that result from this, um, state, I will say, requirement. Um, so Braintree is a rapid transit community and based on our, um, total year-round dwelling units, we are tasked with providing zoning that allows for the construction of 3,769 units. Um, and 50% of our, um, area that we put into a district that allows for, uh, multifamily zoning by right, uh, 50% of that needs to be within a half mile radius, um, of the, uh, either the landing, um, or the red line. And I'll just pass around these maps that just show the half mile, um, circle. So there's a couple of performance measures, um, that the state has ruled out for us. Um, and one already happened, that was back in May, where we, um, did a brief presentation to the Town Council and then I submitted a form, a very preliminary form, um, you know, if you know the regulations, did you have a, a meeting in your town and who's going to be, you know, responsible going forward for, for the following? So that was submitted. So we are quote in compliance, um, with these requirements right now. Um, the next performance measure is going to be January 31st of 2023, at which time we need to submit what is called our action plan. Um, and the action plan sounds, the title sounds a little more action-filled than what we actually, uh, need to do at this point. Uh, but this is a fillable form, um, that the state has put out and basically, um, there's a bunch of different questions. What's your community name? You know, where do you fall in the, in the hierarchy? As I noted, we're a rapid transit community. Um, they ask you to put in the unit capacity requirements, which is the 3,769. And then there's a series of questions. Um, do you have rapid transit within your boundaries? List what it is. We have the red line station. Ask about commuter rail. We have the Greenberg station. It also asks about are there MBTA transit stations in other communities? When you draw that half mile radius, do they hit your community? Um, and Quincy Adams does in fact hit Braintree. Um, it hits a lot of roadway, if you think of where that is, it kind of goes, you know, over Home Depot and then road, 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 onramps, uh, highway, Common Street. So that kind of, Connor and I had run some circles and that kind of...
It gets what, like the highway side of Common Street?
Yeah. Um, so we noted that. Who's, who's responsible for all of this? I'm inserting my information in there. It asks about your local team. And our local team is myself and Connor and Crystal, who's our assistant solicitor. And then I also applied to Mass Housing Partnership for technical assistance and we received that. We're having a meeting, a Zoom meeting tomorrow with our consultant and they've paired us up with Eric Halverson from RKG and he's also on our master plan team. He's one of the consultants. So a really good fit as far as, you know, he's familiar with the community, he understands some of the issues, excuse me, and concerns here locally. So then the form goes on to ask you some different housing questions. What are you doing? What are you not doing? Do you have a housing production plan? And in this section, I will populate with, um, that we are working on our master plan right now. And also, um, some different strategies that we have employed in relation to housing and I will put a narrative together describing the work that we did at Windjammer while that wasn't new construction, that was a conversion and also, uh, Allen Street. Um, Mayor Kukoris also has me looking at 74 and 90 Pond Street as well as 85 Quincy Ave for the use for senior veterans and disabled populations. So I will include, excuse me, all the work locally that we're doing. Um, then it gets into the zoning. What do you have? What are you going to do and how are you going to do it essentially? So do we have any existing districts that comply? The answer is no. We do not have any districts in Braintree that allow multifamily by right at 15 units an acre. We have the Red Sea, but the density is not at 15 units an acre. So they ask you how are you gonna, you know, what are you going to do Braintree? How are you going to do this? Um, so, uh, we don't have an existing district. Um, in the landing, uh, multifamily density, the base density is 19 units. So we could possibly amend that to change the special permit to a Y. Um, also looking at overlay district, um, or potentially a new base district. And we really haven't gotten that far. The question of do we want to completely overhaul, um, the highway business, uh, district or do we want to create an MBTA overlay that would, um, essentially call out the requirements related to multifamily housing in those particular areas? They give you, they kind of ask you, you know, what have you done so far and what do you want to submit to us? Um, I will put together a narrative. I have started compiling parcel data and areas and, um, looking at some rough calculations on density. The more acres you have in the district, the lower the density. Um, the fewer acres, the higher the density. So I'm looking at existing projects that we've permitted. I've got a ton of data on all kinds of housing developments in this town going back 20, 30 years. How are they permitted? What's the density? Did they get variances? Were they comp permits, et cetera, et cetera? So really looking at sort of what we've built, what works and trying to, um, come up with something that's compatible with our, with our built environment. Um, and then the last question is like, you have to give them a timeline. So what are you going to do and when are you going to do it by? Um, and that will include things like public outreach, developing zoning, public hearings. And basically we have until the end of, so this form has to be submitted at the end of January and then we have till the end of the year to get the zoning lined up. So we will have a, a call tomorrow with our technical assistance team and talk through some things. We have some capacity in-house and we'll be leaning on them to do, there's something that the state has put out, which is your, their compliance model, um, where I think it's an input system where you input your factors of zoning to demonstrate that you can in fact, um, build that zoning. I mean, you could say, if I'll make an example, if you, these are just examples again, um, if you had something that was 50 units an acre, but it was two stories and 10% building coverage, DHCD is probably going to say that that's not going to get you where you need to be. So they have put together a program where you can input, um, factors and it will say, yeah, this will work or this won't work. Um, and again, this is a requirement, uh, interestingly enough, there is absolutely no requirement to build anything, but this is a requirement to have zoning in place. And I've, you know, I've spoken very candidly about this. Um, um, there's a, it can get overly complicated. I'm really trying to make it simple and break it down so that people can understand it. Um, and there is plenty of land around each of the stations for us to come up with something that is not in residential neighborhoods, that is not, um, taking residence B and making it MBTA Zone 1 and things like that. So those are not, that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at properties that, um, have the ability to support this type of density in this, this type of use. Um, I've thought a lot about this and I think this is something that, um, I think a lot of communities, um, you can be sort of in three positions. You can do the bare minimum just to, just to comply. You can be, um, creative and look at this and sort of look at what you have and see how you can sort of build upon what we have in our existing zoning or what a community has in their existing zoning. And then frankly, I can see some communities that will use this as a tool. They'll use it as a redevelopment tool. They will incentivize people, uh, with, through density, uh, and through zoning to get rid of things that they don't want in their community. Um, so there's, there's different things and I think different communities are going to look at this differently. Um, it was interesting to see, um, there is a lot of communities that are going for the technical assistance, um, some communities that have a lot of multifamily that are very dense. So I think, I think there's a variety of communities looking at this in a, in a different way. Um, and we're looking at something that, um, works for the community, um, is compatible with what we've been doing, um, and hopefully promote something, um, that, that makes sense for, for Braintree. So I'll be working, um, over the next two weeks on, um, putting together these narratives and I'd like to get it, you know, submitted with, you know, about a week or so buffer. I think the 31st is, I was planning on trying to submit it on the 30, yeah, that one, uh, if I can find my calendar here. Yeah, I was looking to get it submitted probably around the 23rd or the 24th, so about a week in advance, um, just to get it in there. Um, and then I can, I can, we can have... And then I can, I can, we can have updates if the board would like as things progress. I obviously will be looping the planning board in on any type of drafting and language. I think tomorrow will be a good meeting to get an idea of any comments and feedbacks from, from our technical assistance partners and sort of, you know, what they've seen and what's something that, that would make sense for Braintree, ideas that they might have, and just different suggestions on making sure, again, that these, all these different factors, whether it's height, whether it's building coverage, whether it's lot coverage, that all of those things can actually produce what we, what we're trying to accomplish through having the zoning in place.
Okay, great. And you had said that 50% of the zoning unit, the units that are zoned have to be within those radius. Is that right?
50% of your district.
50% of your district.
So let's say we have a district that's 200 acres, 100 has to be in that, in that half-mile radius. The half-mile goes pretty far. You'd be surprised. You'd be surprised. It's, 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 because it just, you know. And I think, I think we can probably get most of it within that half-mile, but I, I don't have all of that information just yet.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions? I'll just look if a board member does. Just raise your hand. I'll call on you. Member Kent?
Just, so this applies to any community town that has commuter rail and/or subway?
There's different, there's different categories, Member Kent, and honestly, I haven't been tuned into the other ones. I've just been kind of tuned into what Braintree needs to do. But they have commuter rail, rapid transit, adjacent community, adjacent small town. And as you get further away, the requirements become, the percentage of units gets less and less.
All right.
So ours is, we have to have 25% of our year-round dwelling units, and that's what's generating that fairly large number of 3,769. We have 15,077 year-round units.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments, questions?
This is, you know, they probably should have thought about this 30 years ago, right? So now they're coming up with it. And are they gonna force us to, to build units, or what, what's gonna happen? And what happens if, you know, we just say, hey, we don't want to comply?
The, if you decide that you don't want to be in compliance, you will be, there's multiple grant programs that you will not be able to apply for, one of them including the Mass Works Grant. And another one, which I'm trying to get a better idea of the figure, is one of these programs provides substantial funding to local housing authorities. And not here, but there have been a couple communities. You may have seen it in the newspaper. It was down on the South Shore. I, I don't recall exactly the town, but they had some fund, because they didn't do this little thing that we did in May. They've got, they lost about $200,000, $300,000. I think, I think Woburn blew off the May deadline, and also. So I'm trying to get some numbers on what our local housing authority gets from these programs. I don't want to speak for the housing authority, but I don't think they're in any position to lose funding.
So they're, they're currently getting funding?
I, I would, I would guess yes, but I don't know how much. But my experience has been that housing authorities aren't necessarily, you know, there isn't a, a ton of money flowing through those types of organizations, and they serve a, a large population here in Braintree in our senior housing. So I'm gonna get all of those numbers, and, and, and those will all be available if anyone has any questions.
So when I think about the half-mile radius, it's hard to visualize, but where, where would be a logical area for potential development of some sort that would meet this criteria?
So I'm kind of, those maps that I had circulated, the Landing, again, we're looking at that existing zoning, and if we're able to just switch the SP to a Y, that would very likely mirror the Braintree-Wamuth Landing District itself, which is a fairly newer district. This board, I believe, or several members of this board adopted that, or recommended adoption of that zoning. And then if we look at the Redline Station, I'm focusing on a linear district and looking at parcel data, lot size, lot, excuse me, lot areas, lot sizes, primarily in the areas where I think the, there could be some injection of residential to create more of a mixed-use corridor.
Okay.
Potentially looking in, in South Braintree Square as well. I'm just now adding and, you know, putting together different parcel data and areas to get an idea of like, okay, how much area is this, and what would the density look like? And, you know, I mean, I think you might also be able, one of my questions for the consultant is, can you work your way out? You know, so do you, closer, can you do something a little bit higher, and then kind of, as you move away, kind of, you know, lower the density? So I have some questions as well for the consultants. But hopefully, I would say in the next couple months, we'll be able to put out some potential areas with potential densities. You know, if you add this in, the density goes down. If you take this out. And again, there's, there's sort of that question of, are there areas that you want to incentivize or not? And that's, that's really a decision for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had sat in on a, I had sat in on a, a presentation on the MBTA communities, and it is, that is what they say. They say there is absolutely no requirement to produce housing. It is just a requirement to have zoning be situated so that someone could come in by right and build this. And it's interesting, too, because, you know, you say like, what if we don't comply? What is this? I mean, I think this is a constantly evolving issue at a, at a local, state, and even national level, this housing crisis, and how that plays into all this stuff. I think it is probably even a bit unknown where we are five years from now, if we don't comply, if it gets, you know, if it keeps continuing to change. But I appreciate that. You've spent a lot of time. I know you know all the densities. And I, I think it's kind of, it's interesting, and I hope as we move forward in this conversation, we can get some kind of imagery to show what these densities look like. Because 15 units an acre is not really that dense when you think about a two or three-story building, like, two or three units per acre, or 15 units an acre is not, it's hard to kind of grapple with what that looks like. And I think when you talk about anything more than like a two or three family, you immediately like go to like these, you know, 10-story buildings that you're seeing up in other communities. And that's, you know, it'd be helpful, I think, to have some of that visual before us as we talk about it, moving, you know, down the line. But I think it's hard to kind of see that. And I think that's important to try to help the conversation.
I, I definitely have some local examples that I've used in previous presentations. And then I think it's the, I've been on so many websites. I think it's, you might just be able to Google it, but I believe it might be on Mass Housing Partnership's page. MAPC did like a 200-page thing, like, what does density look like? And they have all of these projects in these different communities that are like, you know, this is a townhouse project that's 20 units an acre. This is a Skyrise in Cambridge. Like, so that's, that's available now. That has projects all over the Commonwealth. But I, I, I do have some local examples and that I'll be looking at when I'm, I'm, we're looking at putting together language and, and trying to determine what's appropriate. We've, we've tested density here. We've built density, and...
Yeah, it's a hard...
It's been well-received. So I think we can learn from some local examples and expand upon that.
Yeah. All right, great. We do have the master plan update. We did, I believe, you all were at the December meeting, right? So we heard the overall vision statement update. There hasn't really been a lot, I think, since then. Our next master plan steering committee meeting is next, is that next week?
Yeah.
Next Thursday night?
Next Thursday, yep.
As we kind of get into the next phase. So I don't know how much more of an update there is on that, but do you, is there anything else to update?
No, not, not much more of an update. Just continually in trying to encourage people to get involved. We continue to see new faces, which is very exciting, new questions. You know, I tell people, grab a neighbor, grab a friend, a cousin, an aunt, somebody that's, that's in the community, and, and bring them on down. So nothing, nothing more on that end. We do have, we'll be getting up to the website if it isn't already up, the schedules for Phase 3 and Phase 4. And then we continue to do these updates in all of the boards. And we, we put this on all of the agendas. So I'm just trying to get the word out to as many people as possible.
Great. All right, I think that's it. So with that, we just need a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I can second that.
Second, Member Kent. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
You can.
So, you know, we all saw the articles over the weekend about the Plaza development there. What can we expect in the next two, three, four meetings on that or other matters?
So the application was filed last week. There was a issue with who the applicant was procedurally. I've addressed this with Attorney Marinelli, and he provided the revised materials today. So it was filed with the town council, and Sue Semino will transmit it to me, I'd say probably in the next few days. And then I'll be circulating it to the planning board, getting it up on the website. And we will have the public hearing in February. And I, I've advised Frank that the first hearing is going to be for presentation only. I think it's important to hear the concerns of the planning board members and also the public in our decision, excuse me, recommendation-making. So the planning board will be tasked with, this is essentially a, a text and map amendment, and the planning board is tasked with providing a recommendation to the town council.
Okay. So fair to say that next month won't be a one-hour meeting?
Will not.
Okay.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that we got that in the proper form...
Yeah.
Before we started sharing it and so forth. That procedure is, is extremely important.
Great. Thank you.